Javier Mauro Senior, Sebrillo Ezekiel, Bauson Francisco, Dakano Mamierto, Caras Claudio. Kabutahi Felipe, Carinho Bernardo Senior, Camaso Trifilo, Vidal Estela, and Cruz Alice. Garibay Samuel, Bailean Gregorio, Ignacio Salverio, Javier Aquilino Senior, and Calim Teufilo. Garibay Elias, Cisson Marvin, Silang Wilfredo, Salis David, and Ilustryes Saturnino. Tabiento Camilo, Kawili Edison, Ragindin Jose, Abordo Sherwin, and Ben Juan Victor C. Agbuya Danilo, Kalimlim Pedro, Predas Manuel I, Namoka Santiago, Ungus Jose. Karolino Abidnago and Paguyo Tomas.
Shall we all pray? God of all ages, we thank you for these people and all the ways they have blessed us. May the remembrance of their love, their courage, and their compassion call us to gratitude throughout our lives. That generations yet to come may give you praise until that day when you make all things new. We pray in the power of the Holy Spirit and in the name of Jesus Christ, first fruit of creation, first born from the dead, Alpha and Omega, beginning and end. Amen.
For all the saints who from the nivers west stood by way before the world confessed: Thy name, O Jesus, be forever blessed! Thou wast'ryth God, thy fortress and thy might; thou order the cup day in the well for pride; thou in the darkness still the one to light. Open thy sword to the ship that wait; give it my star the day in glory shine; yet all our wonder for all our time. An endless life is peaceful ever long; stills on the air that is a triumph song; and our sorbit again and ours our soul. The tender rays are still more glorious day; the ascents triumph and rise brighter way; the King of glory passes on his way. From the swift from oceans farthest coast, through gates of pearls prays in the godless nose; in praise of fathers and andalitos.
Brothers and sisters, come to the Lord's Table, all you who love Him. Come to the Lord's Table, confess your sin. Come to the Lord's Table, be at peace.
Dear God, how easy it is for us to distinguish ourselves from them, the times we believe we are better than others.
Forgive us.
For the times we put our ways on a pedestal to the neglect of others.
Forgive us.
For the times we avert our gaze so we won't have to look at their condition.
Forgive us.
For the times we wished they would all go away and live somewhere else.
Forgive us.
For the times we feel no discomfort in judging others before we even know them.
Forgive us.
For the ease with which we label people them and others.
Forgive us.
Hear the good news. Therefore, if anyone is in Christ, the new creation has come, the old has gone. The new is here. In the name of Jesus Christ, you are forgiven.
In the name of Jesus Christ, you are forgiven.
Glory to God. Amen.
By one, we are all baptized into the one body. The peace of our Lord Jesus Christ be always with you.
Always with you.
Let us offer signs of peace toward another. Peace be with you. As forgiven and reconciled people, let us offer ourselves and our gifts to God.
We give you glory and praise, O Father, and thank you for all the gifts you have given.
You have to bring us, O Lord. As we bring our offerings before you, receive them, O Lord, and use them for your glory in this church and through the annual conference. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
Let us always stand. The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Lift up your hearts.
We lift them up to the Lord.
Let us give thanks to the Lord, our God.
It is right to give thanks and praise.
Blessed are you, our Alpha and our Omega, whose strong and loving arms encompass the universe; for with your eternal word and Holy Spirit you are forever one God. Through your word you created all things and called them good; and in you we live and move and have our being. When we fell into sin, you did not desert us. You made covenant with your people, Israel, and spoke through prophets and teachers. In Jesus Christ, your word became flesh and dwell among us, full of grace and truth. And so, with your people on earth and all the company of heaven, we praise your name and join there anending him.
On the night before the meeting with the death, Jesus took the bread, gave thanks to you, broke the bread, gave it to his disciples and said, "Take it; this is my body which is given for you; do this in remembrance of me." When the supper was over, Jesus took the cup, gave thanks to you, gave it to his disciples and said, "Drink from this, all of you; this is the blood of the new covenant poured out for you and for many, for the forgiveness of sins. Do this as upon us are drinking in remembrance of me." And so in remembrance of this your mighty act in Jesus Christ, we offer ourselves in praise and thanksgiving as a holy and living sacrifice in union with Christ offering for us as truly proclaim the mystery of faith.
Pour out your Holy Spirit on us gathered here and on these gifts, that in the breaking of this bread and the drinking of this wine we may know the presence of the living Christ and be renewed as the body of Christ for the world redeemed by Christ's blood. As the grain and grapes once dispersed in the fields are now united on this table in bread and wine, so may we and all your people be gathered from every time and place into the unity of your eternal household and feast at your table forever. Through Christ, with Christ, in Christ, in the unity of the Holy Spirit, all honor and glory is yours, Almighty God, now and forever. And now, with the confidence of children of God, let us pray the Lord's Prayer. The bread which we break is a sharing in the body of Christ; the cup over which we give thanks is a sharing in the blood of Christ, the body of Christ given for you, the blood of Christ given for you.
My dear friends, pwede po tayong mag-kneel down as our stewards, communion stewards, will be serving us. We will be having two stations, po. Thank you.
Shall we all pray? Lord, you now have set your servants free to go in peace as you have promised. For these eyes of ours have seen the Savior whom you have prepared for all the world to see. Blessing and honor, the glory are yours now and forever. Amen.
This is the day of new beginnings, time to remember and move on, time to believe what love is bringing, laying to rest that's gone. For by the life and death of Jesus, God mighty Spirit now was then, can make for us a world to have difference of faith and hope are born again. Then let us with the spirit staring, step from the past and leave behind our disappointment, guilt and grieving, seeking new paths and sure to find. Christ is alive and comes before us to show and share what love can do. This is the day of new beginnings. God is making all things new. Peace, grace, and faith will gather round the table to taste and share what love can do. This is the day of new beginnings. Our God is making all things new.
Let's pray. Oh my God, our heavenly Father, we praise and glorify your name this morning. Thank you, God, for the meaningful opening worship service and also for the words that we have heard through your servant, Bishop Prodelaktal. Indeed, O Lord, this is the new beginning of our journey after our beloved General Conference that declared this theme. And so, Lord, we pray that would continue, Lord, to bless and encourage and inspire us as we continue in our journey. We pray, Father God, for your Holy Spirit to continue to be with us and even to our presiding bishop and all of us who have gathered in this place. Lord God, we commit to you our conference. We pray that we'll have a holy conferencing with your blessing for our hearts and minds, O God, as we continue in our worship as well as in our conference. Thank you so much, O God. May your holy scriptures, may the messages that we have heard will continue to inspire us and challenge us to continue to serve you. Thank you so much and forgive us, O God, for all the trespasses and our shortcoming. All of these things we pray in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
God be in your head and in your understanding. God be in your eyes and in your looking. God be in your mouth and in your speaking. God be in your heart and in your thinking. God be at your end and at your departing. And the blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be among you and remain with you always. Amen.
Good morning. Isang ang malakas na palakpak para sa panginoon, okay?